Can you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, February 28th, 2023. We have just come, it is, I should say, it is 7:31. We want to make sure we got an on-time start tonight. We've just come from executive session where we've discussed police promotions and police union negotiations. Our first item on the agenda is a public hearing on a local law amending Chapter 113, Article 2, Section 4 of the Village Code to establish registration requirements for deputized electrical inspectors. Yeah, so can I have a motion in a second to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Molino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein? Yes. The public hearing is currently open. I'm guessing everyone's here for a different agenda item. But if everyone, anyone happens to be here about the electrical, deputizing electrical inspectors, if anyone would like to speak? Any comments from the board?
No.
Seeing none, can I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing, please?
Motion.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Molino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein? Yes. Thank you. Chris, can we move into the resolution?
Yep. Considering adopting a local law to amend Chapter 113, Article 2, Section 4 of the Code of the Village of Rybrook, whereas the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees desires to establish registration requirements for deputized electrical inspectors, and whereas a proposed local law was introduced at in February 14th meeting of the Board to amend the Village Code to establish those registration requirements for deputized electrical inspectors, and whereas the main purpose of the proposed legislation is to require anyone desiring to be deputized as an electrical inspector in the village to submit an application to the building inspector, and whereas the building inspector shall have the sole authority in his or her absolute discretion to deputize an electrical inspector and limit the number of inspectors in the Village of Rybrook, and whereas the Board of Trustees held a duly notice public hearing on the proposed law on February 28th, and the public hearing was closed after people had an opportunity to speak, and whereas the proposed action is a type-two action under Schicker, and whereas the Board of Trustees is fully familiar with the proposed local law, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rybrook hereby adopt the proposed local law to amend the Village Code to establish registration requirements for deputized electrical inspectors.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Any comments? This is pretty straightforward. We've talked about this a few times at our board meetings. Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Molino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein? Yes, thank you. The second item on our agenda is a public hearing on a local law creating Chapter 158, Section 2.1 of the Village Code concerning seasonal leaf blower restrictions. Before we open the public hearing, I do have a few comments I'd like to make. So just to give everyone a little bit of a sense of process, about a year ago, the Village Board referred to the Sustainability Committee a request for report and recommendation on leaf blowers. The committee has put a tremendous amount of effort into this, researching leaf blower regulation in Westchester County and the reasoning behind it. And I want to thank the Sustainability Committee for their hard work and efforts in this process. We also met with village staff in various departments and with outside associations to try and better hone the recommendations. The committee submitted the report to this Board, and a local law was drafted, and for it to come before the Board. It's now up to this Board to decide what modifications need to be made to that proposed local law and whether or not it passes. At this time, Rybrook does not have legislation regarding leaf blowers except for within our noise ordinance, Chapter 158. There are many municipalities within Westchester and the surrounding areas that do have local laws regarding leaf blowers. These include the surrounding communities of Rye, Portchester, Harrison, and Greenwich, as well as Osning, Larchmont, Pelham, Terrytown, Yonkers, Mount Kisco, Dobbs Ferry, Bedford, Bronxville, Maranick, Tuckahoe, Scarsdale, New Rochelle, Newcastle, North Castle, and Pleasantville. Legislation in these communities varies. Some of it is similar to what's on our books, just noise. For the majority, it's a seasonal ban on gas-powered leaf blowers. And, you know, my personal opinion, gas-powered leaf blowers are definitely a detriment to the community. That being said, the looks of people's yards and lawns in Rybrook is a major concern to the village. So it's up to this Board to now find what's in the best interest for the village. We understand that not everyone will be satisfied with the legislation when it's finalized, but it's our responsibility to make it the best we can. And a lot of that is through this process, through the public hearing process. We want to listen to what you have to say. That's why we're here. So we had previously set a public hearing, but on Friday, I sent an email to the community about this legislation, and that's when we heard a lot of response. We've gotten over 70 comments via email and a lot more in personal correspondence with Village Board members. These come on both sides of the issue, and we appreciate the public participation in this process. As this is a public hearing, we'll be opening in a few minutes for public comment. This is how local government works. We propose something, listen to what you have to say. We will not be closing the public hearing tonight. We will not be taking action on this tonight. We want to listen to what's being said. We want to refine it, if need be, in any way we can to make it better for the residents of Rybrook. So a few, I would ask a few things. Please address this Board only, not others in the room tonight. I would say while other communities often impose time limits for comments, we do not in Rybrook. But I would ask that you be respectful of other people's time in here. And I would also ask for everyone to be respectful in all of their comments. We look forward to a healthy conversation on this discussion, and thank you all for coming tonight. So on that, can I have a motion in a second to open the public hearing, please?
Motion.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Molino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein? Yes, thank you. I'm first going to ask the Sustainability Committee to, I think a representative is here, to present, or represent, to present about the proposal.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ashley Wildy. I've been on the Sustainability Committee for many years, and we do have a presentation to share tonight because we, while Mayor Klein mentioned that they requested recommendations from us a year ago, we've actually been discussing this since 2018, when a lot of the municipalities who Mayor Klein also mentioned have legislation now did not. So we've been doing research on this and, you know, for the past five years, and things have evolved. The recommendation that has been shared most recently was for a complete ban on blowers. However, since that time, new information has emerged because some of our, you know, how we came to our recommendation was based on neighboring communities. We know that it's hard for landscapers who are going to have one client in Rye, and then one client in White Plains, and one client in Rybrook to go from place to place during the day and be like, where am I? What am I allowed to use? So we really tried to align with our neighbors, and also we did listen to landscapers' concerns, one of which was thinking that electric-powered blowers would not be sufficient to do the jobs. There were concerns about charges for the battery, how long the battery power would last, you know, the safety of using battery-powered equipment, et cetera. However, and so we didn't want to recommend moving to electric if that was something that wasn't, you know, comfortable for the landscaping community. However, as things evolve very quickly, we have, are modifying our recommendation to only restrict the use of gas blowers at any time during the year. So while we will go through the presentation, we just wanted to cut to the chase because we know that's top of mind for a lot of people. So we are going to recommend that electric leaf blowers be allowed for, you know, January 1 to December 31 of every year, and we do have recommendations about the restrictions of gas blowers. So we just wanted to start off with the punchline. And now we can go into our more full presentation to give you background about where this legislation has come.
Hi, everyone. My name is Bridgette Dix. I'm Chair of the Rybrook Sustainability Committee. We're going to briefly go over our recommendations and some of the reasons why we're asking for gas leaf blower restrictions. First, I want to introduce Sustainability Committee member Robin Willig to speak with us about some of the effects of leaf blowers.
Hello. My job was to present the research and the reasoning behind the concerns with the gas-powered leaf blowers. Gas-powered leaf blowers pose a number of immediate and long-term health and environmental risks to the residents of the community as well as the landscapers' residents may hire. The risks include serious impacts as to what we breathe, as well as to what we hear. The noise from a leaf blower is at best annoying to those inside their homes, and I might add, at schools, trying to work or to play. Outside, it can be unbearable. In the worst-case scenarios, it can cause permanent hearing damage, and the negative impact can be cumulative over time. The closer you get to the leaf blowers, the more irreversible damage can be caused to your hearing. Even battery-operated leaf blowers can impair your hearing, although these machines are quieter. Now, as far as the pollution to our air, you might be aware that the recommended gasoline for a leaf blower is the same as a car. It's high-octane unleaded gas, and the burning of the gas releases a range of dangerous chemicals into our environment. Burning gas releases carbon monoxide, smog-forming nitrous oxides, and carcinogenic hydrocarbons. The half-life for carbon monoxide, you should be aware, is approximately four hours in fresh air. So that's a bit long for you, your children, or your pets to be outside, especially in the summer months. Battery-operated blowers are a major improvement because they don't release the smoke. However, the committee also wanted to make sure that the trustees were aware that in our research, all leaf blowers will send dirt particles, dust, and pollen into the air. These natural particulates, along with the chemicals emitted from the burning gas, have been shown in studies to produce dizziness, headaches, asthma attacks, and enhance suffering for those with allergies. In extreme cases, there have been links to causes of heart and lung diseases and cancers. So that was the reasoning behind all of this discussion. And tonight, we also hope to offer, with Ashley, some viable alternatives to using leaf blowers. Thank you.
Sorry, my throat's a little dry from the winter weather, so. The Rybrook Sustainability Committee would like to introduce common-sense restrictions on gas leaf blowers, as we recognize the impact they have on our environment and the detrimental effect they have on residents' enjoyment of our village's outdoor spaces. Robin touched on many of these reasons when she spoke, such as noise, health, air pollution, and wildlife impacts. These represent some of the many reasons, as a committee, we have suggested gas blower usage be restricted to limited times of the year. The air quality in Westchester has received an F in the past by the American Lung Association, and gas leaf blowers contribute to this issue. Our proposal suggests restricting leaf blowers during summer, which is when the air is most often hot and stagnant, causing greater concentration of pollutants. These high levels of smog prevent people with lung conditions such as asthma from enjoying the outdoors with their families. Because of the close proximity most residents in Rybrook have to their neighbors, it can be impossible to escape fumes, dust, and other particulates that are blown into the air when leaf blowers are used by neighboring properties. This can greatly limit some residents' access to their own outdoor spaces during the nicest parts of the year, when they would like to enjoy the outdoors. This slide shows a map of Westchester County. Each star represents a municipality that currently has some kind of leaf blower restriction in place. As you can see, we are one of very few left with no restrictions at all. When you consider the size of our village, with many having close proximity to our neighbors, it makes sense that we would address this issue, as other Westchester municipalities have already done. The leaf blower restrictions being suggested would allow village residents to be able to peacefully enjoy the outdoors without loud disruptions from blowers and the pollution that comes with gas models. Enforcement issues, community resources, and if gardeners will raise rates are all common questions when it comes to leaf blower restrictions. Because there have been quite a few places across the U.S. in the past few years enacted blower restrictions, we now have published studies that offer some answers. A research study that polled 17 cities with leaf blower bans in place for multiple years asked city officials from departments such as police, planning, public works, environmental health, and parks and rec, along with some residents, those exact questions. When asked, are leaf blower bans enforceable? The typical response was that the bans are 90% to 95% effective. In most cities, enforcement is performed in response to citizen complaints, so police do not seek out violators in the absence of complaints. The study noted offenders were, for the most part, new people unaware of the blower ban. However, cities report that the number of complaints did diminish over time. When asked, is enforcement a major burden for the responsible agency? The vast majority of cities reported that enforcement was not a large burden. When asked, were gardeners driven out of business or did they raise rates? There were no reports of gardeners going out of business or raising rates within the 17 cities polled. The bans in these 17 cities were overall a positive change that did not prove to be a significant burden. I'm going to hand the mic over to Ashley again now, who will be discussing suggestions for phasing out leaf blower usage and some alternatives. Thank you.
Yeah. And if, while that's happening, there are some seats available in different areas? If anyone wants to sit down, who came in more recently?
So this was, this is, this is just a picture of how some people, maybe not people, but animals like leaves. This is a squirrel collecting leaves for a little house that here, nest that here she is building. As we've said, all of the recommendations that we've made are research-based. This is just showing a chart that we kept track of the legislation in neighboring municipalities. We especially looked at the city of Rye, since they're our closest neighbor, and they also had had a full ban, which was one of the reasons, on gas and electric, which was one of the reasons we had gone with that, but they recently revised to be a gas-only ban. So that was another reason that we have decided to, you know, just recommend a restriction on gas blowers because, you know, it's like everything. It's an evolving environment, but we do want to make things as straightforward for, you know, landscapers as possible. So what is the recommendation? As Bridgette mentioned, we don't want to make this an onerous restriction. So the first phase, which is common in many other municipalities, is just to not have gas blowers in the summer months when they're not as necessary, and to make sure that the gas blowers are available to be used during the spring cleanup times when obviously there's debris from, that's collected over the winter, and, you know, landscapers and homeowners are doing spring cleanup. So allow gas blowers at that time, and then also allow gas blowers during the fall when there's, you know, heavy foliage falling. But the idea is in the summer, really, grass is just being cut, and so there might be, you know, gas refuse that is on, you know, walkways or around pool decks, as seems to be a big concern. But that electric blowers are really sufficient to manage the small amount of material that would need to be blown in that time. So this is the recommendation of what we would start out with. We're also asking that the trustees consider future phases for, like, to increase the time of restriction of gas blowers. I want to make a bunch of comments about these future phases. The first is that we have, we've called them phases and not like year one, year two, year three, because we want, you know, flexibility about how long, you know, we might want to take to become comfortable with, you know, a certain phase before expanding into something in the future. So that's something that, you know, we leave up to the trustees to decide to increase these, increase the amount of restriction in upcoming phases. This is also a research-based model. Bedford is using this model, and they're on to phase, I think, three of increasing the time when the gas blowers are restricted. And the idea is that as people become more accustomed to using electric blowers and see how useful they are, that they don't feel the need to, you know, be using gas blowers as much as they are and realizing that, you know, the battery life does work, the equipment is sufficient to do the job, and that it's much more pleasant and healthier for them to, you know, not be breathing in the fumes of gas blowers and using electric blowers for more of the time. Another piece of research that went into this phasing is when really should spring cleanup happen? One of the issues with starting spring cleanup too early is that pollinators nest and lay eggs in leaves, and once, if the weather hasn't gotten warm enough and these, you know, bees and other pollinators haven't hatched, that you're just killing all of them. So you really want to not do a spring cleanup until it's warm enough to do that. And so the timeframe that we're, that we want to, we want to restrict the use of gas blowers until, you know, that, those pollinators have established themselves. And then also, in the fall, we're really, we've looked specifically as, when do the bulk of leaves fall? Because there's research on that. And we've tried to just have gas blowers permissible during the time when the bulk of leaves do tend to fall. Let me make sure I... Oh, one thing I wanted to mention is that times of day and days of the week when blowers are allowed is something that's come in discussion. We feel like as a Sustainability Committee, we focused on the sustainability and health issues regarding blowers, but since we do have a noise ordinance and we think that anything in the noise ordinance should really cover blowers as well, we didn't make any more recommendations. I mean, that's just not something that has really been covered in terms of research. And so if you want to make some modifications, then we'll leave that to you. So the last thing I wanted to talk about is alternative to gas blowers, because you don't want to tell someone you can't do something and then not tell them what you can do. And really, leaf mulching is a great solution. I have a landscaper who, first of all, has used electric blowers, electric mowers, electric trimmers, and mulched my leaves for five years, and I have a two-acre property. So it's very doable, and it's a very simple thing. All you have to do is, on your lawn mower, is get a mulching blade. And it's just a specialized blade which mulches the grass clippings or the leaves. And when it's done properly, your lawn looks the same as if it was just mowed and blown, because everything is shredded so small that it's right in the ground. The benefits are that it adds nutrients to the soil. You know, when you're blowing, the nutrient level is the top level of soil. So the kind of funny thing is, when you're blowing, you're blowing the nutrients off, and then people want to come and have their lawns fertilized, and it's sort of like you had the fertilizer right there. It was the leaves and the grass clippings that were already in your soil. So when you do this mulching, you have that nutrient base that's going right back into the soil. Because lawns are being mowed, it saves times. You don't have to mow and then blow. You mow, and it's, you don't have to blow anything away because it's already mulched into your yard. It certainly makes roadways safer. As you know, driving around Rybrook in the autumn when there are piles of leaves, it's dangerous. If you're going one way and a car's coming another way, you usually have to wait because, you know, you're swerving around a big pile of leaves. It takes a lot of our DPW's time to be sucking up the leaves for a number of months of the year. So it would make our roadways safer if people start mulching more and instead of blowing and piling up the leaves. And like I said, it creates a clean look, and actually, Portchester's DPW has just started to mulch the leaves and clippings in their parks. And they seem to be really excited about it. It's going well. So we have a neighbor who's been proving that this is something that works for them. So I, so thank you for listening. Hopefully, we've shared some information and given some background to explain why we think this would be a healthier solution for Rybrook's environment and people. And we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I thank the Sustainability Committee for that and for their, and for... Well, thank you for the work you've done on this and, you know, throughout, the presentation and the work that's gone into creating this. I am gonna, there is a list. People have signed up for it. If you would like to speak and you haven't signed up on the list yet, I would ask that you do so. I am going to go a little bit out of order to start. We have with us two former mayors, the previous two mayors here, and I would give them first right. And then also, after that, if there are any, I had heard there may be some students. If there are any students here, I will give you the opportunity to speak next as it is a school night, and you should be doing your homework. Sorry.
All right, let me get my notes out.
And I would ask that anyone who comes up to make a comment, please introduce yourself by stating your name and your address.
Thank you very much, Mayor Klein. I'm Joan Feinstein, Six Robins Roost, Rybrook. And yes, I am a former mayor, having served for five years, from 2008 to 2013. I'm going to introduce you, Paul Rosenberg, who succeeded me as mayor, and he served from 2013 to last year. He's our longest-serving trustee mayor, okay? It's our pleasure to be here. We haven't been here that often. First of all, I want to thank the Sustainability Committee for all of their hard work. I am well aware that they have been working on this for years and years. And they are our stewards of the environment. They care about the environment. They care about the Village of Rybrook. And the positions that they postulate may not always be favorable to everyone, but their service should be applauded. And I also thank the Board this evening and Mayor for keeping the public hearing open. Trustee Epstein is not here this evening, and I think it's important that she be part of the process. I did have the opportunity to watch the last meeting, and thank you for the clarification because I was going to say that the city of Rye changed their ordinance at the end of 2022. Thank you very much, and I wanted to bring that to your attention, but Ashley, you already did that. I also was going to come up with some of the concerns that I had. And number one, the biggest concern I had was the restriction of not allowing electric. So that's been taken care of as well. So I have a few other concerns in the legislation as drafted. Probably my largest concern, I'm going to give a small concern. My small concern is starting May 1st, which would be the prohibition. Spring cleanup, I'm not a landscaper, but I've lived in this community for 41 years, and I've seen different patterns of storms. We all have. And sometimes you have a late winter, and I'm going to say we may have a late winter this year since we're getting snow in March. And sometimes you have a very rainy April, and you are not able to complete your spring cleanup by the end of April. So I just would suggest that you consider starting that May 1st and maybe pushing it over to June 1st. There are many, the survey shows the dates are variable in every jurisdiction, municipality, but just think about that, because sometimes it cannot be accomplished because of the weather patterns. Probably, my biggest concern about this legislation are the exemptions. It exempts the Village of Rybrook. It exempts the Town of Rye, which we do not have jurisdiction because it's a higher level of government. And the Town of Rye owns Crawford Park, which is about 40 acres, I believe. It exempts the schools. It exempts membership organizations, membership clubs. That is the Blaine Brook Club. The Blaine Brook Club is exempted from this, not only because it's a golf course, but even the entire club of 166 acres. I went to the comprehensive plan that was passed by your board.
Our board.
Our boards worked on, which is a wealth of information. Of Rybrook has a little bit over 20... Of Rybrook has a little bit over 2,200 acres. And with all of the exemptions, the parks, the Blumberg Club comes to 166 acres, the schools come to about 70 acres, and we have four schools in Rybrook, because Portchester Middle School is in Rybrook and part of Portchester High School is also in Rybrook. You have the parks, so about 40 acres of parks. You have Arrowood, the golf course, and the legislation's not clear whether it has to be an active golf course. That's 72 acres. Then we have other property that's owned by the village. For example, Elm Hill Park, Richmond Park, Meadowlark Park, et cetera, et cetera. So I added all these acres up. So therefore, the exemptions would come to about 25% of the 2,200 acres. I guess my concern is, if the reason we're doing this is for the environment and to reduce the noise pollution and the airborne pollution, why are we making exceptions? I know some of the reasons that have been set forth in discussions, because it's commercial and you don't have, you have larger parcels of land and you don't have the technology. Let's not be, I want to use the word...
Hypocritical.
Hypocritical, yes. I was going to say, let's be consistent. Let's not be hypocritical. If we're going to do this, let's be consistent. And my last point is the phasing, and I thank you so much for discussing the phasing. And I think that's very important. First of all, the way the legislation is written is it becomes effective upon the filing with the Secretary of State. Now, the way it works is that we all know, is once the legislation is passed, you send it up to Albany, it's filed, it's done. Let's assume hypothetically you pass this legislation within the next month or two and you filed it. It'd be effective immediately. That is not fair to the landscapers. It's not fair to the residents of Rybrook. The landscapers in this room, they're our friends, they're our neighbors, and it's their livelihood. They have to make accommodations for this. They may have to get additional equipment. And I think that it should be, if effective, whatever's decided, if you decide to vote on this, it should be delayed to a later date. So I think that's it, Paul.
I have a few.
You have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For consideration.
Mayor Klein, I, Joan said it very, very eloquently in terms of some of the things regarding the technical issues in the local law as written. And again, I applaud the Sustainability Committee. They have done some unbelievable things since their formation, and I have the utmost respect for them. And I am so thrilled to hear that they're recommending not a full ban, a full ban. That being said, why was the legislation as written for a full ban? Unless all of a sudden the Sustainability Committee changed their minds over the last few weeks or since Friday, when the legislation was published, it seems to me that there should have been a discussion, a robust discussion beforehand, talking about really, do we go with a full ban or do we go with, with electric only? And I think that that makes a big difference to a lot of people. And I would echo also what Joan mentioned about the phasing. Just like Joan mentioned, you may have a late spring, you may also have an early fall. If we have a particularly dry summer, you may have leaves being dropped earlier than early November or late October. And, you know, people want to get rid of their leaves off their lawn, for whatever reason. And I do agree with the mulching place, but there are some people who may not agree with that. And so I don't know how the law can be crafted. I'm sure Chris and Ralph can put something together. But I think that there needs to be some sort of a, of a little bit of flexibility to the Board and to staff to allow for, to variant, for variances in the weather. I also echo Mayor Feinstein's thoughts in terms of the exemptions. Exempting the village guys, I'm sorry to use the word, it's hypocritical. And when I talk about the village, we talk about the village staff, the government, the way they maintain the parks. If we're go, just as Joan said, if we're going to really embrace this, then we go all in. And I know that the town of Rye is doing all-electric. Maybe their equipment isn't the greatest. You know, I spoke with Michael prior to this meeting and I know that there have been some challenges with that, but I think that it's, it's doable and at least do it on a pilot basis for the village. Do something. Show some sort of effort. And I know that Chris's daggers are coming out of his eyes.
Not at all. We are...
When I saw that exemption and that, I said, this has Chris Bradbury, so we can print it all.
No. To be fair, to be fair, most are, most are, most of the municipalities are exempt. But I will say this, we are implementing electric and we are implementing electric in our parks, you know? So we're, we're buying the electric gas blowers. We're doing it for this year. So we are, we are doing what we're talking about. Some of our concerns happen to do more in other areas. You know, when, when trees come down and branches, we use the blowers as part of our cutting and clearing, so that we want to open up roads. There's different types of exceptions that we're concerned it being as a blanket exception for municipalities, but from the park standpoint, our lawn maintenance, the off-season ban, I could tell you, we are already going, we are already planning that for all our parks this year.
Okay.
And that's as a policy decision.
And that's a policy decision.
That's great. I can't wait to see how much you've put in the budget.
No, actually, this year's budget, we have...
I'm out of the loop.
So we understand it's going, you know, we need to do that and we're fully, we're planning on it for this year.
And then finally, just in terms of the phasing, again, I echo what Joan said. It's very aggressive to phase it in this year. We are already at March 1st. And to, you need to be able to give people time to prepare for this. My suggestion would be to phase this in next year. It will allow both the homeowners and the landscapers to do this. I'm not against electric leaf blowers. I'm very happy to ban the gas ones during those specific times of the years. I know that the technology is not perfect, but I know that it will improve. And people are just, you know, like, like you said, Mayor, at the beginning of this, everybody is not going to walk away from this happy. And I, and I give you kudos, because this is a controversial topic. I kept it at arm's length when I was mayor.
I would say you were the one who asked for important recommendation at your last meeting.
I did. It was the last meeting.
My last. That's right. So I applaud you for doing that. I think that, you know, there are, you know, some tweaks, as both Mayor Feinstein and I had mentioned, that can be made to propose local law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both for your comment. I did mention that we would open it up to any students who are present that would like to make comment, as I know it's a school night. So please, if you could come up and just introduce yourself and...
I'm Takashi Kimura, 395 North Ridge Street, Lake Red Cross Elementary School. I'm currently a junior at Blumberg High School and a member of the Roots and Shoots Club here at the high school. And the Roots and Shoots support the proposed legislation restricting the use of gas leaf blowers from May to September. Gas leaf blowers are incredibly polluting. Their emissions contain toxins, pollutants linked to cancer, heart disease and asthma as well, as well as climate change, mainly affecting the workers who work on it constantly day in and day out. Leaf blowers also blast dirt and dust at high speeds, eroding topsoil and destroying pollinators and bird habitats. I believe that this legislation is about preparing the residents of Rybrook for the future of landscaping reform. While the ban is on the off-season for leaf blower use, this is intentional. It will not introduce radical change to blindside homeowners, but will acclimate them for the future as the national winds blow in favor of restricting gas-powered landscaping equipment. Ways of town must always be prepared for the inevitable change through gradual adjustment. The Roots and Shoots Club urged the town of Rybrook to join more than 100 cities across this country in protecting our health and the environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other students present that would like to make a statement? Okay, then we'll go to the list. Thank you. And I am going to apologize ahead of time if I mispronounce your name. And if there's anyone else who would like to sign up, maybe I can leave, I'll take this and leave you with that. If there's anyone else that would like to sign up, otherwise we'll open it up to public comment at the end as well. That's Joan and Paul. Okay. All right. So the first on the list is, I believe it says Scott Talmage.
Good evening, Scott Talmage, 40 Rockridge Drive. Much of my concerns have somewhat been addressed. I'm not sure exactly what I'm talking about any longer here, because there was a piece of legislation that was proposed. I've got it, I looked at it, I marked it up. And now it sounds like the committee that was in charge of pushing this forward has shifted and changed. And it seems to me that we can all talk about what we want to hear and spend a lot of time tonight listening to our neighbors, but it seems to me, we actually need to understand what piece of legislation is actually going to be considered by this committee before we can intelligently speak on it. I agree with most of the things that our two former mayors have said about where we should go. I agree with a lot of the things that the Sustainability Committee has said. I agree that the exclusions, the proposed exclusions seem nonsensical. I was looking at the presentation materials and there were, you know, health risks to children, to those who are seniors, we're talking about the workers who are involved in it. And yet, we allow our school district to have it, we allow our retirement communities to allow for it. I can't even fathom or understand why we'd allow a golf club or a membership club to have it. Their workers are, would be equally as many other workers would be. So it seems to me that what we really need to have is a redrafted piece of legislation to understand what's really before us. You know, I have an electric blower. I use it in the summertime. I like to clean off my porches before I have guests over and I don't want to have to deal with that with, I'm not even sure how I would deal with it frankly, without that piece of equipment. And so I think that what we really need to understand and have a better sense going forward is what we're, what you're actually going to be considering and voting on, because it sounds to me at least like the current proposed legislation is already outdated based upon what the committee has come forth. The only other thing I would add, and it's not in here and it is a bit more restrictive, but as a relatively long time, not quite as long as Joan, resident, one thing that has always bothered me is commercial gardeners coming around on weekends. It's the time when we're all outside, we're all around, we're not at work, we're not in school. And it seems insane to me that you can have people, commercial gardeners, blowing lawns, you know, mowing the lawns and taking care of it on a Saturday in the middle of the day. So I would ask that, if you're going to consider proposed changes to the legislation that affects and improves the community, that would be something I think the Board should consider. But I would like to see a revised piece of legislation before, you know, anybody goes forward with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I just speak to the procedure for that?
Please.
I'm just going to speak to procedure. So the public hearing tonight is on the legislation that is, that you see on our agenda. So what you've heard tonight is some recommendations from the Sustainability Committee that the Board consider modifying that to allow for electric. The Board right now is listening to comments from everybody, so if others feel the same way, I think it's good to express that. You've heard that similar things from, from two former mayors. What happens next is if the Board agrees with those recommendations and the, any other changes that are suggested by members of the public, they'll talk about it, then the law gets redrafted, and it can't be acted on until they have a revised local law that has to be in place for 10 days for them. So it's not like it'll be kind of changed and just adopted. It'll, you'll have time to review the changes and to make any comments on those changes, you know, whether you're satisfied with it or not. So assuming the public hearing gets adjourned, as the mayor said before, to another date, they'll, you'll be able to go online, see the revised legislation and be able to comment on it.
Thank you, Chris.
Sure.
Next, I have Vito Luongo.
Good evening. My name is Vito Luongo. I'm a landscaper in Rybrook and Harrison. As of right now, Harrison doesn't have a ban on any blowers, so we get to use what we want. It was good to hear that you're going to allow maybe electric blowers. But the only thing with electric blowers right now are battery-operated. A battery lasts about an hour, each battery. So if you're going to work eight days, you need eight batteries per blower. If we have five or six blowers, you're talking 48 to 50 to 70 batteries that you have to carry with us. Number one, not only do we have to carry them, we have to find a way to charge them as we go during the day. We feel, yeah, we need to do something. We don't feel that the electric blowers or the battery operators, battery-operated blowers are ready for us yet. There just is not enough power, they don't last a long time. Now, going back to, you're saying in the months, in the month of June is probably the biggest month for grass. Grass grows the quickest and the thickest, no matter if you, I use mulching blades. Mulching blades are great in April, half of May, July, August, and half of September. Grass doesn't grow that much. As it, as you cut it, it puts it in. Half of May and all of June, you use mulching blades, you still got to use blowers, because the clumps of grass will come out and will sit on, sit on your grass. If you don't remove that grass, your grass is going to turn around. In the fall, if you decide to use mulching blades for leaves, you guys drive around, you see the piles of leaves, and you want to mulch those on the lawn. So instead of being on the curve, all those, all those leaves will be caused, everybody's lawn, the lawn will look brown. And that stuff will eventually will rot the grass and it will make it worse than better. So I don't think the electric blowers are there yet, and I don't think the mulching blades are answered either. But thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
You want to?
Yeah. Vito, can I ask you a question, Vito? So in the months of July and August, how often do you use the blowers?
We still got to use the blowers every day, because, you know, number one, clippings still go onto the sidewalks around pools, pools, and also the driveway. So we still need them to some extent. Maybe make a restriction, not use three or four, use one kind of thing. So I think we need something for us to operate.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I think, I think the next one says Michael Silver. I think that's what it said.
Hello. My name is Michael Selzer. I'm on, I live at 33 Talcott Road. I'm on the Maintenance Committee of our Board. So when we saw this proposal, we were concerned that it would actually increase the cost of using a landscaper. We use Vito right now, so we work with him closely. And we have 22 acres that are affected by this. So a lot of the concerns raised tonight, we feel the same thing, that the exemptions didn't make any sense. It wouldn't, given the speed at which you want to implement it, would increase our costs. We have 68 homeowners that would feel the impact about this. They've already commented to us that they're not in favor of this. So we feel that this is something that has to be addressed. As everyone said, the timing of this doesn't make sense. Implementing it this year would impose a burden. A pilot program makes more sense. Let's see how it works. We also have to acknowledge that we have climate change that is affecting patterns of which we're going to do cleanup. We had a snowstorm in late February already. We had a lucky winter, but clearly it seems like climate change is going to be a factor going forward. We need some legislation to address that as well. So I know that, as Scott just mentioned, some of the concerns he had, I recognize, but it's already been addressed, so I don't want to repeat and delay everything. But for, we just feel that 22 acres would be imposing undue residence, a burden on our homeowners. And one thing we saw in this presentation, we have school, children and elderly we're concerned about, and as you pointed out, schools are exempt from this and retirement communities are exempt from this. If you're trying to address the concerns of their health, you're not succeeding with the language that's currently drafted. So I would ask the committee to reevaluate, address, implement some of the concerns raised by our citizens, and we can look at the legislation. I think everyone agrees we have to do something, but the current format, we just, it doesn't feel that it's going to work right now. So we just want to acknowledge we have to address the sustainability issues, but let's be smart about it and not rush into anything. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Michael Foreman?
Hi, Michael Foreman, 24 Talcott. Thank you, trustees. Thank you for the Sustainability Committee for the hard work that was done, thoughtful work. I don't want to repeat everything that's been said. I agree with everything that's been said. But when it comes to Talcott Woods, something to consider is that it's very much an environmental area unto itself. It's bordered by two runoff streams that get the runoff water from the rest of Rybrook, and they come by our houses. And that happens, especially now with having a storm of the century every year. You know, we now have, have a need to have clean runoff streams that protect our houses, that protect the land on either side. We had issues with the runoff streams over the last couple of years. So when Vito talks about the kind of work that he's doing in Talcott Woods, there's an environmental imperative besides just everything looking great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 6 David Lane, and I'm also the president of the HOA of Enclave at Rybrook. And first, thank you very much to the Sustainability Committee and to the trustees for everything you do for our community. I submitted some written comments that, and I'm here speaking as a resident, not on behalf of the HOA. Our attorney, David Gelfarb, had provided comments around the standing of the HOA along with other HOAs here in our community. I just wanted to acknowledge and mention the fact that just because other communities have put these type of restrictions in place, I feel that this is very much an E2 type of legislation that we're looking to put in here, or some small group is looking to put in place. The characteristics of each community really needs to be taken into account, so things like location, proximity to the airport, proximity to Connecticut, the parks that we have in our community, the Hutchinson River Parkway, all of those things contribute to what our needs are here in Rybrook, very different than other communities across Westchester. We have noise legislation already in place and restrictions, I think, that address a lot of the concerns that have been brought up around noise and some of these other concerns. I'm also very worried about the slippery slope of this type of legislation. What's next? I mean, lawnmowers and other gas-powered equipment. It feels like our village and society is moving this way, in this direction, towards electricity, more efficient gas-powered type of machines and equipment. And I think that we need to let that play out in an organic fashion. And we see it happening all around us. You mentioned that the village, even without passing any kind of policy or legislation, is moving in this direction. We're seeing the same thing throughout Rybrook. So is legislation like this really necessary? It just feels like this is extreme overreach, and I have a lot of concerns about it. And with something like this, and where it has our village headed, is very scary. I think this is the type of thing that pits neighbor against neighbor. It creates an environment of retaliation. You know, who called the police on me? I mean, is this the kind of community that we want in Rybrook? So these are all things to consider when we start piling on legislation that may not really be necessary. Is this a solution in search of a problem here? And I think this is something that we seriously need to consider. And legislation like this, that has passion on all sides, really should go to the vote of the community. I'm not fully understanding why a small group would make these kinds of decisions, lifestyle decisions for us, freedom decisions for us, without the community[792.12][792.12][applause] with the larger community's voice at play. So I'll leave it there. I think you know how I feel. And again, some more detail and comments around safety, concerns around safety, and several other concerns that I have on this in my written comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Yeah. I would just address part of that, in that the Village Board is the representative board that does pass local legislation. So that goes from anything from building code, stormwater regulations, so that includes to what the fees are for the rec basketball programs.
And I would just add, if anybody wasn't sure or wants to see the letters that were submitted, just, you know, we always try to be very transparent. So all the letters that we received up until the meeting, they're all online. If you go to our website and go to the agenda, you'll see all the letters that were submitted. And if you're not sure if your letter was included, you should find it there. I believe we captured all of them. We caught all of them.
All right. I believe it's Sam Sevillo. Again, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing names.
Good evening. I'm here to represent as a landscape contractor, also as a firefighter, that serves the Village of Rybrook and Portchester. I'm not totally against something that's, the technology is not there yet. It can be in the future, but the concerns that I have about battery-powered operating equipment right now, I have come across a fire so far, once, with the instance of a battery-operated leaf blower. It not only puts lives and people's property at risk, it also puts my life at risk as well, serving the community as a firefighter. The battery, if it gets damaged, goes into thermal runaway. If it goes into thermal runaway, once that happens, the battery starts popping, and there's no controlling of the actual substance that's inside of the battery. Once that happens, it goes in fire and starts everything else around it that's within the contents of the room, which is also making the smoke very toxic and very unsafe for the environment of any individual, citizen, or firefighter going in at the risk of the actual fire. Also, Tesla cars is another one with numerous cells going on the lithium. When a vehicle crashes, it actually does not get put out, it just takes copious amounts of water, and it never actually goes out and can actually reignite two days later without any warning. I just wanted to put that out there as a base. But the reason that I also bring that up is there's not enough time in the day that the batteries will last, as set. And it's also very dangerous if guys like myself on the landscaping industry side touch them, damage them, and break them. They're now on vehicles with, also stored with other machinery that has gasoline, which is obviously a double recipe for disaster. I've flipped my hat, I'm now volunteering at a firehouse, I'm now putting gear on, but I'm also fighting a battle that's also very dangerous. It became a lot worse than just having regular, traditional gas-powered equipment. So I want you guys to just be aware of that, of the understanding. It happened just, actually in the month of January, we had a house fire, where the initial fire was not caused by lithium battery. But because the actual blower was in the house and was within the structure, it actually caught the house on fire a second time because it actually got the heat that it needed from the first fire prior to. The fire department put it out, my members put it out, but also about an hour later, that battery that was within the structure actually went into thermal runaway and caused the fire the second time. And the fire was twice as big as it was the first time that we went there. The initial time was caused by electrical, which was determined. So I just want you guys to be aware of that on that side of what I, I have the flipside of both things that I do. So I'm not opposed to having one blower per property in the summer months because we don't use the blowers as long, as often. It's just that I do like to recycle my clippings and drop them in within the lawn of where it comes from of origin. But the issue with that is if you remove me from being able to use power equipment to do so, I'm going to have to bag it, which is also going to be more costly to residents. And I don't want to raise the race, I'd like to be fair with business and be, you know, transparent across the board. So I can't just put a brown bag out. They're going to expect me to take that away, which that means I have to pay a dumping fee, and it goes, it's a trickle effect throughout the summer months and thereafter. So that's all I have for now, and I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments and for your service as a firefighter, volunteer firefighter. Michael Bastone?
Michael Bastone, 400 North Ridge Street. At your suggestion, I'm going to speak to the bill as written first, even though it sounds like the undercurrent is that that's changed. The bill as written is a blanket ban on all leaf blowers. So just for context, I use an electric plug-in as a homeowner, use it to clean my deck, the driveway. Throughout the months, I have, you know, flowering tree that drops, and then it drops seeds. I have pine needles. There's a wave of pollen that comes at unpredictable rates. So not only am I cleaning that up to enjoy my property, but also I have family members with allergies, and for them to enjoy the deck and the outdoor spaces, I need to clean it up before they do that. So to the extent you're considering changes to the law, I think that there should be allowances for small amounts of use by homeowners. It seems clear from the undercurrent of this conversation that this bill is really targeting commercial use of gas-powered leaf blowers. And so it sounds like some exceptions may be perfectly acceptable to the board. But I do want to pivot because the way this happened threw me for a curveball. Everything I was going to say kind of feels irrelevant at the moment. So I'm going to pivot with that, in that you should be drawing legislation as narrowly tailored to the problem that you are trying to fix as possible. Large-scale blanket bans always have unintended consequences that bring community in to speak to them, that feel that their problems weren't considered. All of the problems that this government seeks to address should be tried to be done as small and incremental as possible with phase-ins and perhaps building at the smallest and largest problem, and grown out from there organically to address new considerations. It's almost uniformly problematic to start with a full ban and then try and tailor it back. It's the complete opposite way to do this. You should start with the smallest problem and build out. And I think that you will get more effective legislation that way. I think that you will get more community input that way, and you'll end up with a better result. This law as drawn, you know, addresses leaf blowers but leaves gas-powered lawnmowers. So are you really addressing the problem that the legislation says it's seeking to address? You're still going to have noise pollution, you're still going to have air pollution. If the process was done in a different way, I think that you would have a different result. I think you would have a better result, and I think you might obviate a lot of the need for some of the comments from some of the community today. So I will leave it as, it sounds like the final bill will be quite changed from what was proposed. I welcome that. I hope that you will have some exemptions for the small use of leaf blowers by homeowners to clean a patio, to clean a walkway, that I think all of us need for the quiet enjoyment of our outdoor spaces, and that the final legislation will tackle the real problem that it sounds like you are seeking to tackle, which is commercial use of gas-powered leaf blowers and equipment. I will also just say that the sort of, the last presentation about the fire risk of batteries is something I hadn't considered. And the idea of a lithium battery going up on a gas-powered truck next to cans of gas and a gas-powered lawnmower is kind of a nightmare scenario that I hadn't even contemplated. So I'm very thankful for those comments and that perspective that I certainly didn't have before I got here. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Rosenblatt?
I'm Andrew Rosenblatt, I live in Nine Eagles Bluff. And I'm here also in regards to the law that I saw as written, and so that's what I'm going to respond to. And I think it's an egregious overstep of government on homeowners' property rights. The government should not be telling us what we can do on our own property rights. I fully support, you know, what was said before, and if you're going to do a full ban, I think it's completely wrong. You want to do an electric, I hear the arguments for it, but then something to keep in mind is all the batteries that the gardeners are going to have to buy, and it doesn't do much in terms of environmental help in that regard as well. There's also unintended consequences. If you can't, you know, properly clear your yard, there's going to be leaves and dirt and whatever, it's going to go into the street. If it rains, it's going to make it more slick, it'll make it more dangerous, even if it's in the summer months. And I think it's completely hypocritical to, with all those different carve-outs. You know, if you're really truly targeting what's written there as the designated rationale, residential homes are like the least likely to push back. Your commercial properties are the ones that are going to, you know, be more important tax base, then, you know, it should be all or none. Doesn't make sense otherwise.
Thank you. Um, I don't, what does it say? The next speaker, it kind of looks like Abe or A6. Hmm?
Oh, Aldo.
Aldo.
Aldo. Did you want to speak? Oh, he left?
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Did he leave?
Vito, Aldo, Aldo out there? I think he left.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
He probably feels the same way as Vito.
Okay. All right. Then if Aldo comes back, we'll go back to Aldo. Michael Schleifer?
So just prior to speaking, similar to the gentleman on David Lane, David Gelfarb represents Belfair, I'm here from Belfair's car.
Is that the letter from David?
That's the letter from David.
We have it in our backup.
Make sure you guys have it.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm just pulling up my prepared remarks. So just for introduction, I'm Mike Schleifer, I'm a resident of Nine Fellowship. Just wanted to make a couple of points. Some of them might be repetitive, but I think they're worth you guys hearing it. So as I mentioned, I'm not only here as a member of the Board of Belfair, but also as a concerned resident. You know, I think the legislation as written, as many others in this room have said, was poorly thought out, poorly written. And from our perspective in Belfair, we believe it's going to drive up our landscaping costs significantly. And that's from direct discussion with Sebastian Bufamonte, who services our common areas. It's going to make it more difficult for us to execute landscaping operations within the community, you know, and from, just from an equitable and fairness perspective, our association over the last couple of years in general, and I think many people in this room, have had to shoulder significant cost increases across the board due to the highly inflationary environment. So to, you know, from that perspective, to go out and force people to go out and purchase all this new equipment, and then the landscapers are going to then pass that cost on to us. I mean, you guys are trustees of the village, you have a fiduciary responsibility to us. As a member of the board, I have a fiduciary responsibility to members of my community to manage costs and keep costs reasonable in relation to the services that we provide for our members. So, you know, look, you know, the way things are going now, you know, people are moving toward green, we get that. The technology, it's probably not there yet, it will be there at some point in the future. But, you know, we can't just jump the gun and say, hey, we're going to go flip the switch and go battery. Like that, the technology, I mean, you heard the landscapers, it's not there yet. And I'm not an expert on technology when it comes to that. But that's what, you know, hear it from the horse's mouth. You know, the other thing too, you know, we're talking about noise issues and pollution issues. I mean, I think we have bigger fish to fry. I mean, we have the airport in our town, we're dealing with significant noise, there's been increased flight operations, increased flight activity, plus the smell of the jet fuel. So we're sitting here worried about a gas blower where a landscaper's there at a person's house for maybe five, 10 minutes, blowing up a bunch of lawn clippings, but yet we have Airbus A320s and huge jets flying in and out of our town every three to four minutes, and we're getting the smell of jet fuels and all that noise that comes with it. Don't you think we got bigger fish to fry when it comes to airport noise and airport pollution rather than a stinking leaf blower? I mean, like, why are we wasting our time on these issues? I don't know. That's just my 10th sense.
Quick question. Do you have more restrictions on leaf blowers up in Belfair? Like, they can do Saturdays?
No, we do Saturdays. And quite frankly, landscapers have to operate on Saturdays, just the volume of work.
Just ask them.
No, no, no. And I'm just saying from a practicality perspective, they have to operate Saturdays. They can't adequately service Belfair and their clientele without working six days a week, sometimes seven days a week. It's impossible to do the job unless you want them working at nine, 10 o'clock at night during the week. I don't think that's something we want.
I was just curious if you have more restrictions in terms of times or days?
And they've been very good to us. Just, I mean, from a generality speaking perspective, I mean, our landscaper, he's up there usually a day and a half on, you know, during the week, and then he's up there like maybe half a day. So maybe you're talking, you know, two days a week just to service the property. So to that point with the technology, like the gas technology facilitates him being able to service us in two days. If you go to, you know, not using the mulching or having to now manually rake the leaves and clean up, like, he's not going to be able to, the property and the amenities, it's not going to the amenities, it's not going to, it's not going to look the way it's supposed to look. And by the way, my understanding is that the village has an ordinance where, you know, your lawn can only be manicured. It's got to be manicured a certain way. It's got to be a certain height. You know, we're saying here that we have a restriction on how we want the properties to look, but now, you know, now without the use of the leaf blowers, now you're going to have lawn clippings that are going to be all over people's property. Like, do we really want to have that look going? So.
So you said they service it in two days?
They're usually there on average two days a week.
So they service the whole place in two days?
Two days a week. Mondays and Saturdays.
Are those the two days they go and service leaf blowers? Hmm, all right, interesting.
Usually they do the common areas on Saturday. That's about half a day. And then Mondays, it's about, I would say, two-thirds to a full day on Mondays.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's interesting.
Thank you. Barry Albella? And then Greg?
Sorry, I just wanted to say it's common property that they're there servicing.
Okay.
That's the end of this list, so I don't know.
My name is Barry Albell. I'm at 25 Talcott. Thank you for the opportunity to talk this evening. I work green because I care about the environment more than anybody. But what has happened to our great country? I think the Sustainability Committee has a new two or three or year or two or three year project to think about the unintended negative consequences of batteries. Remember the big flood that we had and all the Teslas blew up? We're doing things from the seat of our pants. It makes me scared. We're losing our way. I'm embarrassed. Nauseated, actually. This isn't an issue. What are we, crazy? We should be adults.
Sir, I would ask that you address us, please.
I can't look here? I'm addressing it. You're addressing everybody here. I'll look here, I'll look there. Now he wants me, he's controlling where I'm going to look. Come on, Mayor.
Out of respect, sir.
I am addressing you, out of respect. Out of respect, I'm addressing everybody. We've lost our way. We've lost our way. I think we just have it too good. In the past five years, Mayor, how many of our neighbors, and I want to know exactly, have complained about the noise?
Are you asking that specifically? I don't have that number right now.
Because in your letter, noise was a primary issue. How many have complained about the noise of a leaf blower? All right, you can get back to me on that. We're here tonight by often well-intentioned, typically power-hungry, but well-respected on many levels, government officials to bicker over a small and petty issue. I'm blown away, and it's not a joke, that after three-plus years of government-imposed lockdowns, we're spending so much time, so much energy and valuable resources on a leaf blower. As my grandmother used to say, where is our common sense? She used to say, leave well enough alone. It's another joke. But in all seriousness, it's true. We all should leave well enough alone. And golly, things here in Rybrook are very good. Actually, great in many respects. It's my fear that issues like restricting the use of leaf blowers on our own properties is exactly the wrong topic. All of us should be thinking about common sense. At this point in our lives, we need fewer ivory towers leaning silly government legislation like this and focus on eliminating some others. This is nonsensical. It's a feel-good imposed process that actually is destructive. What's creeping here is a very dark cloud. And local, let's stop this craziness. Let's stop being politically guessing experts and turn back to letting common sense and open market dictate our actions. Stop scaring our children, teaching them that so much of what we accomplished is bad. For those that don't know, very soon, a long-lasting, effective, nuclear-powered leaf blower will be available with no noise or no carbon emissions. Yesterday's newspaper, a true story, yesterday's newspaper had an article explaining that now it's okay to leave your potatoes in the refrigerator. Why? Because five years ago, they had a study in another committee and another study that said if you put your, it's in the paper, if you put your potatoes in the refrigerator and eat them, you can get cancer. No, it's changed. Come on, people, use our common sense. It's a true story. It's been disproven. The science told us a second half smoke kills, that masks unhealthy elementary school children is okay. Do you know, people in New York City, it's illegal to keep your door of your own private business open while your air conditioner is on that you pay for? You can get a fine for that. Look it up. Have we lost our mind, trustees? Use your common sense. Drop this issue. Move on to bigger fish. There's plenty of them out there. What's all this fuss about overpopulating our world? Expect food scarcity. We might even run out of space on Earth. Some legislators overstepped their bounds and most legislation is almost impossible to reverse. Let's not do this. A leaf blower is a great thing and let's leave it alone. And by the way, do we have any legislation on gas-powered lawn cutters? Or do we have any, driving to work this early this morning, do we have any legislation, Mayor, on snow blowers? Do we? It's a question.
Is any of that simply covered in our noise ordinance?
Oh, only the noise ordinance. But you didn't go after the snow blowers or you're not going after, it's only the leaf blowers. I like the way we're picking things out.
What? No. Well, yes, maybe, we'll see. I thought you meant, uh, is that a J or a Y? Ken?
I'm glad to know I'm not the only crazy person here in Rybrook. But I would tell you, you know.
Please address this board only.
Sorry, Ken Eagle, 5 Winthrop Drive. I've been a resident here 25 years now. And reading that email, I think, and reading the actual proposal was something that got me to come to one of these meetings and stand up here and speak probably, this is probably the second time I've been to one of these meetings and the first time I got up to speak about it. That's how, you know, I think egregious it was. Now, with that said, you know, I appreciate what you guys do. I appreciate what the committee does. I've sat on international, national committees that have governance of thousands of people, myself, and I know what goes into that and how you can make nobody happy, believe me. Just a couple of things, you know, again, I'm not going to reiterate what everyone said, but the way it was written, very poor. The reasoning for it was not well thought out, the noise, the pollution. Last I checked, I mean, we talked about elements, leaves and soil and dust and pollen being blown into the air. I'm pretty sure the wind can do that as well. As far as scientific research, I can tell you, as a person who has published almost 600 peer-reviewed scientific articles in the medical literature, that you can find literature and research to support just about any position that you want to support. There's very little that's definitive out there. So, you know, I can appreciate what members of the committee put forth and what went into it, but there's always two sides to everything and there's really nothing definitive in any of this scientific research. Again, I think if noise is an issue and it's the noise ordinance and the weekends, you know, you ban the use of these very loud machines on the weekends, you know, that would have to go for gas-powered mowers as well and power washers and, like someone said, snow blowers, all these things, they all contribute. And just to pick out, you know, that one aspect, I think is fairly capricious and again, not well thought out. So it sounds like there's going to be a lot more discussion on here. I don't want to take up anyone else's time, but, you know, I think clearly they've realized a little bit of what was wrong with the initial assessment there. And listen, I'm an environmental guy. I've driven an all-electric car for the last eight years. I'm a believer in electric. That's not the problem. But, you know, I don't appreciate government telling me what to do on my private property. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kate Briggs. We haven't touched on one, oh, we haven't touched on one aspect is that the village here does have a tree law. Okay? And trees make debris all year round. Maples in the summertime, you have those little things that go in your nose. Maple is just one of the bunch of things. I'm all for that. I think the way this proposal was written has gotten everybody. I think people have touched that. I just want to adjust that in my experience with some other towns is that once you start imposing laws, then people don't want to plant certain plants. They are restricting their landscaping on certain plants. And then there's also all these creative waves of doing landscaping procedures. They're suddenly pruning in October when you can use a blower to help clean up because of the cost. So those are two aspects over that way. I do also want to talk about the batteries. We just have some firemen enter the room. They can probably get up after me and talk to you about thermal runway and the safety. But what I do want to talk about batteries is that some of these tests in these batteries are done in a desert. During the day, the desert only has 30% humidity. Northeast, we're looking at 70, 80, 90% humidity at some days. That's a danger zone right there. The other thing is the Department of Transportation, US Department of Transportation, is coming down with some laws on how much batteries and gas can be in a truck. That is something very serious. It is a walking time bomb. Add in a little fertilizer, add in a little of this, you've got an explosion waiting to happen. On the aspect of explosions, suddenly, isn't the doctor's office in Rye, you can no longer park in the building if you have an EV vehicle? You have to park outside of the parking garage? I believe that's on the side. Something to think about. The parks and having electric machinery is great when you are not a mobile landscaper trying to get enough batteries all day long to go and to hop around to different places and how to charge that and have that cumbersome aspect on it. If you're in a town Crawford Park and the equipment is not going on a vehicle and leaving it, you can walk to the garage setting and get the next battery while the one is charging, someone is there to watch it. That's, the technology is slowly coming in that situation, but for the mobile landscaper and for us, and to be picking on leaf blowers, not going after people who clean gutters, chainsaws, all the other trades, that's not really fair. And then to force us, somebody talks about rates and rates of not going up. I hate to tell you, rates will go up to the consumer. It's just not really now going into effect. We had a nice fall as far as cleanup go. When I clean up in fall, I can cut the leaves, I can mulch mow, but then at some point, the volume becomes too much. And yes, we can put some into the beds, we can bring it out, criss-crot it, put it back in the beds, but that means more time in the house, more. And also weather. If it becomes very hot and rainy and the leaves become very heavy, also the density of leaves, some leaves like a honey locust, very easy to chip chop up, other leaves like an oak, which last and fall and hold the latest, are very thick. And so there's something to think about when you're mulch mowing some of these leaves over time, something like that, too. Sanitation in some houses, there's certain diseases in insects and not cleaning up leaves, especially like the beech leaf disease, is a huge factor of cleaning up the leaves because that's where the bug is in, coming in. So it's not like a one-size-cuts-all. Okay? The time of the year, having restrictions on the time of the year makes it more and more stressful for us landscapers to get our cleanups done in a certain time. We only have a certain amount of weeks before then. We have to get annuals and Mother's Day and the next step and the next step. And to keep on limiting the windows makes it more stressful and more aggravating. Somebody mentioned neighbor on neighbor. I have actually a few police departments on my speed dial because I have, I'm just working, we have no machines out and especially during COVID, people would come out and start harassing us. And finally, I called up one of my friends that works in a different town and he's like, you just got a call on the spot. I was like, I didn't want to make a commotion. He's like, you have to. People were coming out of the houses during COVID. Now hopefully that has passed and segue on. There's a lack of labor. There's a lack of good labor. I can use a lot of rakes. I have a lot of rakes. I've been trying to hire, I think everybody in this room can hire two to three people for their company, minimum, to start. And so now you're going to handicap us with less equipment or cumbersome with the batteries. Batteries are expensive, the equipment. I have a 21-inch mower I'm trying to buy for a client because we want to do it at her house, her property only, not traveling on the roads. And it is $1,500 with two batteries, the charger and the machine. We're in that ballpark of that for the 21-inch mower. It's a good-sized mower, a good quality type of mower with a good quality parts. That's only going to give me enough charge to work at her house specifically. I can go out and buy a commercial-sized mower, the same type, anywhere from $600 to $1,500. I can fill up the gas can and go all day. So we're talking two hours worth of time for $1,500 right now as the technology stands versus all day with another 21-inch machine and not have to worry about the cumbersome of batteries and charging them. There's a liability. I touched on the lack of plants. There's also bad work habits. And I like how some people are talking about how their perspective that some people can dictate how the whole town is going to live because that's hard. Not everybody wants to have their property a certain way. Some people like it really a lot more messy and some people, and that's fine, too. We have properties that are really let go and more natural and beautiful in their own way and we have other properties that are more formal. There's also a liability issue with lawyers. We are held liable, the insurance companies and stuff like that. Our contracts for plowing are very specific because of the liability behind it alone and our contracts for serving customers. And then we don't clean up the little leaves that someone slips while they're walking around on the pole deck. Who's liable? Us. I think during the summertime, limiting equipment and blowers is, you know, maybe one blower, a little hand blower, a couple of minutes to clean up the privet hedge, get those drains, the walkway, I think you're pretty much done, a clog here, a clog there. But during the spring and fall, we would need more resources to help with the cleanup and the burdenism in some areas. I think, thank you very much. I think that's enough topics I went to all.
Thank you.
But the thermal runway of batteries is very important to understand. We're not there yet with the technology. It's going to come in time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Allison Nichols?
Sheila.
Okay.
Hi, Yolanda Stone, 18 Law Ridge Drive. I am strongly in favor of the proposed leaf blower ban as written, but I do understand the allowance for the electric blowers and I see that. I'm hopeful that, I was hopeful that Rybrook would follow suit with what many of our neighboring towns have been doing for several years now. For the past four years, we've had landscapers who only use electric equipment to service our property with much success and no increased cost to us. Actually, one of our, I wish, had I known, there would be so much opposition. I thought this was a really like a no-brainer kind of thing. I thought. I thought everybody would be in favor of it. But I guess I was wrong. I wish I was more prepared because, and I actually did reach out to my landscaper today, but he was unfortunately too busy plowing. But they piloted an electric program last year. So it was actually somewhat new for them, although they've been moving in this direction because so many towns around us are banning leaf blowers and they've had to adapt, like as many other landscapers are doing. And so they piloted it last year and he said they were, you know, in comparing, they had one crew doing all electric. So it's not that they combine the equipment on the trucks. They don't combine their gas-powered equipment with their electric equipment. I guess for very good, forget very good reason. And so, but they piloted it and they found that there was no difference in their gas-powered crews and their electric crews. And no increased cost to us. So we've been, you know, very happy with them and they do use the electric blowers, you know, as needed. I will say, and the only reason why I would say, you know, I would be okay with limiting that use for the summer months when it's not as necessary is because they are very loud. You know, they don't have the same emissions as the gas, but they are extremely loud as well, I will say. But, but I'm, you know, I'm okay with that. So however, you know, even though we use the electric equipment and we've reduced the noise and emissions on our own private property, the amount of noise and pollution that we endure from our surrounding area, right outside our house, has not changed one bit. When we moved here, the two most appealing things about our house were number one, being walking distance to the school and our front porch as well. So, you know, unfortunately, I can't walk to and from school with my kids without inhaling exhaust from one of these machines during, you know, spring, summer and, well, not summer, we don't go up to school, but just being in the neighborhood, being outside and fall months. It's, anytime we're outside, there's someone, you know, in the neighborhood blowing and we're inhaling the exhaust and dealing with that. And I can't even sit outside on my front porch and make a phone call and hear. So that's, that's always been an issue for us as well. And when gases and particulates are inhaled by landscape crews, residents, neighbors and anyone walking by, they create public health hazards by producing large amounts of carbon monoxide and ozone-forming chemicals that contribute to smog and they're highly toxic to our lungs. These things are undisputable. I mean, you know, you can talk about, I was actually like astounded when I was looking at the amount of research that's been done on specifically with leaf blowers. A lot of people are saying, why, you know, why leaf blowers? Why not lawn mowers and other pieces of equipment? It's very specific to those pieces of machinery and there's a lot of research. Again, I don't have it in front of me. I wish I did. I wish I had more, you know, printed out. It was just way too much to print out. I mean, there's, that's how much evidence that I found. It was just a lot. It was astounding to me. And again, it's just, this is not new information. The, you know, the temporary results on our property is not worth the lifetime of harmful effects on our health, our environment and our quality of life. I would also say that, you know, the, it was brought up, somebody said something about waiting to give landscapers more time to digest and to prepare and to purchase equipment. I think none of this is new. You know, it's not new. I mean, like, I'm looking around Yonkers, White Plains. Larchmont did a complete ban, like a complete ban of all year round, which is, you know, talk about restrictive. I think that that's extreme, but I see why it's happening because I think that's where, that's the direction it's going in. So this is not new information. I don't think anybody should be shocked by this. Gas-powered leaf blowers, they're nonessential, they're antiquated and no ban on these polluters is too restrictive, in my opinion. Hundreds of cities and towns across the country have already enacted legislation restricting or eliminating the use of these machines and Rybrook should be next. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Grasso?
Okay, I thought this was gonna be a no-brainer also. My name is Frank, Frank Grasso. And I've been here now 13 years, okay? I lived on a very large piece of land, an acre, and now I live on a very small piece of land, maybe 10th. And I spent my life savings to come here, okay? And I've been up here before, okay? And I thought Rybrook was gonna be the greatest place, right? But my neighborhood was filled with blight, okay? And Christopher Bradbury here in the prior administration worked with us, worked with us to change the laws. We had crime in the neighborhood. We had houses abandoned, falling apart. I spent hundreds of thousands of dollars fixing my house. Other people moved in the neighborhood, fixed their houses. And when I saw this law, this was the best law and legislation that I've ever seen attempted to be passed by this group of individuals, okay? And I'm glad I came late, accidentally. I meant to come earlier. I didn't have time to prepare a written document, which I would have loved to do. I got the email Friday, but I had some family issues we had to take care of. But I want to tell you the other side of the story of what it's like to live, okay? In a neighborhood that's been affected by blight, that's grown and gotten better, okay? Well, you know what it's like to live in a multifamily district when the leaf blowers come and the gas mowers come at 8:00 in the morning? On the dot to the second, okay? And turn those machines on, not one machine, but five, okay? On an early spring, the first spring day of the year that you wait for, it's so beautiful, the birds and everything else, singing? I don't have singing in my neighborhood. I've got dozens of blowers that are probably well above the noise threshold that's legal. When you get four or five of them, all my house is filled with filth, okay? Let's just get past that part, okay? All the ground, everything that's on the ground, it's blown up into our bedrooms all over our home, okay? Then we get to the gas and everything else, okay? Even if it's an electric, like I said, you got the filth from this, okay? I don't have anybody asking me, okay? Do you mind if I pollute all your air in your house, turn your house into a filthy mess? I don't have anybody coming to clean up my house after this is done, okay? So where are my rights as a property owner? Where are all the rights of the people, okay? I gotta tell you, okay? The biggest thing right now is air pollution. And I'm telling you, the world's dying by air pollution, okay? I'm not joking. I'm an engineer and scientist. I spent my whole life becoming one. I'm gonna tell you right now, every industry wants to tell you, okay? They're not doing anything wrong. We're not the cause of anything. I'm gonna tell you something, all right? They got satellites in outer space. I spent half my life studying and working with satellites. The satellites were put up there as an experiment and by accident, they find methane, okay? They weren't looking for methane in large volumes. It was a special experiment on methane to see the effects of it and how outer space can be used to understand it. Instead, but they find hundreds of thousands of tons of methane leaking from the earth up into the atmosphere, okay? Now, where's it coming from? Oil wells, okay? This is an industry that's self-policed. We're not doing anything, right? We're following all the laws. Every five years, we check everything. These satellites find this methane, the most dangerous thing in the atmosphere, okay? Unchecked. They're brought to the, right? They're brought to Congress, okay? The UN. These are big American companies, okay? Some of the people live here, these big wealthy communities, okay? We've got billionaires and millionaires living here. The CEO says, oh, no. That satellite made a mistake. It's detecting CO. The scientist says, the satellite only detects methane, okay? That's what it was, there's no detectors on there for CO. It's all about methane. Every industry wants to say they don't affect anything, okay? But the truth of the matter is, it's air pollution. I gotta breathe the air and it's being blown up filthy and it's being polluted into my You know, as we progress in life, okay? There was wood, that went, okay? Then there was coal, that went. Then there was steam and then that went. Then there was oil and that went, okay? And now there's natural gas and that's going too slowly. And now there's electric, okay? And electric is where it's at, okay? That's what makes us who we are and everybody else who they are. Because we produce a lot of electric, it's industrial might, okay? And it's electric is what's cleaning up the environment. Don't be fooled by the reports about the battery. Don't be fooled about the reports about nuclear and all this, okay? We're going nowhere without electric. You want a country you could defend? You gotta have electric and you gotta have a lot of it. And I mean a lot, okay? And that's what runs our military. Don't think that it doesn't, okay? It's our electrical power, okay? And that's what runs this country and that's what keeps this country alive. If we keep going down the road and polluting the air like we're doing, okay? And we don't pass laws like the ones that you want to pass? You hear what Larchmont did? That's what we should be doing, okay? There's absolutely nothing wrong with this, these five lines you put in here, right? Does it go far enough? No, it doesn't go far enough. It's gotta go further. What falls from the trees onto my property stays on my property, okay? I'm at the 95, 98% recycling rate. I don't put leaves out, I don't put garbage out, okay? Everything's on my property stays on my, end of life, maybe a little tiny bit. Maybe I got a few pounds of garbage we create, okay? I put that responsibly in it, it goes to the incinerator, wherever it goes to get burned, okay? We recycle everything. We put a few branches out once in a while, right? But I even try to keep the limbs of the trees, I use them for something. On my acre property, I have everything electric, okay? I don't even use blowers, right? Any leaves that fall down, I rake them up, I put them in the back. Nothing goes out to the street. I don't know why we even allow anybody to put anything in the street. All the contractors and the people around my neighborhood, they throw their leaves in the street. It's illegal, but that's where they are. Five, seven, eight, 10 feet of the right of way in the street, no tickets, no anything. I see cars veering around. So much for the leaves, okay? Why even pick them up anymore? Why blow them anywhere? They fall to the ground, leave them on the ground, it bothers nobody, you know? Compost what you got, leave it on your property. If we took everything and maintained our properties as responsible as we could, our garbage, our sanitation bill and everything would probably reduce, you could probably reduce it probably 90% from where it is. If we did everything we could. You've got the compost program here, you can bring your compost. So why do I walk around, I see every week two, three garbage piles completely filled twice a week now? Because we just haven't adapted to a new and better way. I've spent almost 40 years now adapting. Everything in my house is electric. Everything. The only appliance I have that's gas is because it's not in my budget yet, but when we remodeled and redid the whole house, I put a 95% gas burner and it was a brand-new oil burner. We sent it to the recycling. That's what we did with it. It was brain spacking though. I put a 95% efficient gas boiler because I didn't have my budget to buy an electric one. If I do, and as soon as I do, I'll put an electric one and it will be 100% because we've done everything we could do. There used to be less of the kind that I am now, but there's more and we're out there. And you know what? Your legislation just supports that type of individuals to develop so that we're no longer the minority. I remember, nobody, almost nobody did what I do. But now there's, if you look around and talk, there's just lots of people doing it. And if you encourage it and keep encouraging it, it'll get better. Laws like this will be like, you'll get floods a letter coming in, oh, let's do more, let's do that. You passed a law last year, it was a little bit kinda odd, you know, but I said, let's see where it goes. But sometimes you step back, sometimes you step forward. But you gotta be proud and you gotta be brave enough to say, we gotta move forward. We're a good village, are we a great village? No. Can we become a great village or a greater village or a better one? Yeah, this is the way to go. Keep up the good work and don't be discouraged because people want to, I don't know, put fear in you or something or whatever it is because it's wrong. I walk around the neighborhoods at night during the day and I pick up trash everywhere. I look to see what we could do better for the neighborhood. I don't, I don't look anymore for kinda what's wrong, but I look for what are we doing this way and what could we do better? And if I had more time, I would do more things, but as time allows, I'll try to do more things. But every time I am out, I go out of my way to pick up trash, I go out of my way, if I see something, if there's something not right about that neighborhood, I'll try to call the police if I need to or so on and so forth. And that's what keeps the neighborhood good. That's what keeps the community good. And these types of actions are doing real good. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Thank you. That is the last of the written speakers I have. Is there, before you come up again, I would just ask if there's anyone who has not spoken yet that would like to, please?
Hello to the trustees. Hey, Greg. Thank you for reminding me. And hello to everyone here from the town of Rye. My name is Pam Jaffe. I am a town council person and I head up the Sustainability Committee. So I've had the immense luck to work with your committee. They are fabulous. And I do thank you on behalf of the town for allowing us the consideration of the exemption. But as of a year ago, Crawford Park is green, so we thank you. We are now a fully electric park. Rye Town Park has followed our example, and they're gorgeous. They're absolutely beautiful. So whether or not there's mulch down, whether or not there are leaves, we take care of it, and that park is the gem of Westchester. So because as a member of the same community, when we decided to go green at Crawford, I said, okay, walk the walk. I'm gonna try this at home. And I'm part of the working culture that's switched over to probably 90% working from home at this point. And my landscaper, time after time, would come during the middle of the day, during a conference call. I'd be on the phone with a client, with the CEO of my company, with someone. And I'd have to put it on hold. I'd have to run out. I'm like, please, 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 no blowers. I keep asking you, no blowers. Leave. Leave the clippings. Leave or mulch... The leaves, just please leave them. And this was two years. This was two years of me begging with my landscaper, who I loved. Finally, I said enough, and we parted ways. And Ashley Waldy, thank you, Ashley, hooked me up with her Green Mowing Service. And it's been an interesting year. And yes, it's a different technology and a cost differential. It's a different relationship. And as far as the batteries go, I know the estimate we got this year, they did ask, and they may have asked most of their clients, can they recharge batteries on property at our, you know, at our outdoor outlets as they're working? So that's something to consider. It's not something I've answered yet. But one of the things that really affected me and made me think about going electric and what... Why? Why would one do this? Research shows that one leaf blower, just one leaf blower, has the same impact on your ears as standing at Westchester Airport and listening to a plane take off. That's the amount of damage one blower can do to a human set of ears. And there's more than that. I live with family members who have horrible asthma. The emissions are awful. The emissions are toxic. I look at our own Westchester County laws. You see how vehicles which use the same exact fuel, thank you, Bridget, as leaf blowers do, they are so tightly regulated. What comes out of cars? The emissions are so tightly regulated. What keeps our cars clean is so tightly regulated. I could be wrong. I don't think Westchester has updated leaf blower emission laws since 2007 or 2009. They're leaving it to communities like Rye Brook to figure out what is best and healthiest for their neighbors and their residents. As the town, we can't set this regulation. So I thank you, and I thank Sustainability for taking a brave stance and doing the research and realizing what's healthy and good. And what we can do to support is helping with education. When we went green, we worked with AGZA, the American Green Zone. We work with Quiet Communities. We opened Crawford Park up. We brought in green equipment. We asked landscapers and we asked neighbors to come to Crawford and test it out. Try it for themselves. We can do that again. Let the town work with you. If this is a step you want to take and you want to inform and educate our neighbors and our residents and the landscapers who are asking so passionately to change with the times and to consider our health, we can work together as municipalities to train and to change. So I do thank you. I thank you for considering this. I thank you for doing the hard work. And I thank everyone in this room. And this is a wonderful discussion. And it's the first step to change. And this is one of many communities across Westchester who have made positive change. When the city of White Plains can do this, feel like our village can as well. We can come up with a solution that works for the parties in our village. So thank you all for being here and thank you all for entertaining this. And please let me know how the town can help.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has not spoken yet that would like to comment? Yes, please, sir.
My name is Mark Schulman. I just moved here about four or five months ago. I live at 20 Carroll Court. I was not planning to speak tonight because I wanted to really listen, and I echo what the young lady just spoke about. I think this is a very good opportunity for us to be listening to each other. I come away with three words: change, communication, common sense. And I think this, that your committee did an amazing job and has been working on this, I guess frankly, since 2018, if I understood that correctly. And I think you've come a long way, but what I'm hearing here tonight is a newcomer. And I'm very proud to be living here, and I think you guys are amazing because I think your patience and the way you've been listening tonight is remarkable. Remarkable. And I think we're lucky to have you guys do it because I know we pay you a lot of money for that. But what I would like to suggest tonight, and I don't want to be presumptuous and I don't want to be one of those people. I think listening to the landscapers talk tonight, listening to some of the people that are so in favor of, you know, this particular law and some of the people that are not in favor of this, I think it would be a really wonderful opportunity for the landscapers. And maybe you've already done it, so I apologize if you already have. That's then I'm being presumptuous. But I think it would be a good move now because I think you're gonna rewrite this law. And I think the, I commend the committee for even considering going to electric. I think that was a big step that you made before the meeting. But I would just encourage that we have more communication going forward before we enact this law, before we even write this law, and that we talk to each other and that we have, you know, some of the landscapers work with you and talk about what you want and some of the homeowners here. Because we have a lot of different opinions about the home, you know, how the homes work. Our last speaker, you know, spoke to that. So with no more conversation, because again, I'm impressed that we've all stayed here tonight until 9:30. I did not think this was a two-hour meeting. I had a lot of stuff I wanted to watch on TV tonight, and I don't know. But at the end of the day, again, I just want to thank you guys for what you're doing, and I hope to come to more meetings because I'd just like to hear what's going on here. But thank you for your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. And to one of your statements, what's the, what was the, we met twice in drafting this law. We met twice with the New York...
New York State Landscapers Association.
Turf and Landscape Association, the New York State Turf and Landscape Association.
I'm not surprised. I'm not. I know, I'm not duped by you guys' work, but I just think maybe it needs a little more, a little more work.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else who has not yet spoken tonight? Okay. If there are members that would like to speak again, I would ask that any conversation, any comments, again, be directed at us, that this is a comment towards us, not towards someone else that has made comment in this room previously. Okay? Please.
Thank you for allowing me to come up. I think one of the subjects you touched base on, I don't think any landscaper here would mind during, you know, March 1st through December 15th type of thing, any restriction on timing of the day, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, 10:00 AM to 4:00 or 5:00 PM on Saturdays. I think that's something that's a noise thing. I think for us, as business owners, trying to juggle all these different communities that we're working with in all these different towns, both Larchmont and White Plains have been very new and there are new rules. I don't think it's really hit up to the plate yet to really get an understanding of how it's going. It's a step forward. Larchmont has a lot of small-scale properties along with some big properties. So it's more manageable in a smaller scale. But when you're talking us landscapers moving around from place to place and trying to manage all these rules and laws, I think we're all in favor for times of day, and we understand the year aspect. But just to come, as this law was written, and have so many of us turn up, and most of us has been up since 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning, minimal, for plowing, tells you how much we were jostled by this. So I appreciate your time again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lee Froyen, 6th David Lane. How did I forget what I've been saying? Wait, I'm thinking of, oh, yes. We've been referencing the input from the New York State Turf and Landscaping Association. Is there input that was provided to the village available for public viewing?
I don't know if they had a written statement. I don't believe they had a written or official statement. I think it was conversational. Is that correct?
They were invited to, they came to a Sustainability Committee meeting, right? Greg, maybe you can just touch on this?
Can you just?
You speaking on mic, Greg?
Just right there, it's fine.
I'd be curious to know if they were in favor or against the ban on leaf blowers.
I think it was more conversational about, conversational about adjustments.
I can answer that. We had two meetings with the New York State Turf and Landscape Association. They did not come formally to our Sustainability meeting, but we did have one meeting with them just before the current draft, the local law we had before us was completed, and one after, just to hear some of the concerns they had about the local law as drafted in.
Yes, so what was just said, we also, the Sustainability Committee also met with them in 2019, so prior to draft during this report and recommendation.
Certainly, I think it's fair to say, you know, they raised concerns, some of the ones we've heard tonight, but they also had a clear understanding or expectation that, you know, communities were going in this direction because they're seeing that elsewhere. So they're adjusting too as the communities. I think one of the hard things for all the landscapers, I think, is having different rules in all the different communities. It'd be a lot easier if that was a, for them, if it was more county-wide, but that's not the case. It's left up to the local municipalities, you know, because different communities have different times or different restrictions. It's hard to, hard for everybody to manage, I'm sure. So we, you know, we understand that. But I think there were, you know, I think a lot of the comments we heard tonight, we heard expressed, and also, there was also, I think, I felt that there was an understanding that municipality is going to continue to go more and more in this direction.
Yeah. And I would just say, once again, I really appreciate everyone's comments. I appreciate everyone coming out tonight and staying here for two hours, as you mentioned, and missing whatever might have been on TV or, and a long day. We certainly, we certainly feel that. At this point, I do want to, well, we will continue this public hearing. We're gonna keep the public hearing open. I'm not going to take a motion and second to close the public hearing. We're not gonna take any action on this tonight because I think it's clear that there are some changes that need to be made. And I'd like to just open this up a little bit to board discussion of where we think this might be headed. And I think we already have the recommendation from Sustainability Committee to, during the ban period, that the gas blowers stay banned during that period, but to allow electric. And I think, I for one, I think I'm on board with that. I think that's a good recommendation. I think there could be some discussion of phasing of the implementation of this, whether it's 2023 become a pilot year. So I would welcome any board comments. So I know, trustee Heiser, would you like to?
I've been quiet tonight, which those of you who know me know is most uncharacteristic. And I'm actually gonna stay away from the proposed legislation. What I want to talk about are property rights. People seem to be applauding at the notion that there should be no incursion on anyone's property rights. Now, I'm retired, so as far as I'm concerned, every day of the week is the same. I'm also a terrible sleeper, so pretty much any hour of the day is the same to me. So I would like to know, as a property owner, could I run my leaf blower on Sundays? Could I do it at 4:00 in the morning? Seems to me that anything that says I can't is an infringement on my property rights. And as somebody else pointed out, the noise, isn't that an infringement on my property rights? Maybe I should make you put up a barrier. I think we really need to realize that we all love the idea of property rights and restrictions as long as we like the restrictions. We like the idea of speed limits because we don't want to die on the highways. But we really sometimes don't like the absolute number. So is it the concept of a speed limit? Or is it, it's, gee, the village's speed limit is 30. Maybe it should be 50. I don't know the answer, but it seems to me we all live in a society where there are limitations on our freedom. We can't park anyplace we want. We can't park whenever we want. You need to get over this notion that you can do whatever you want, whenever you want to. I'd also like to address this notion that, gee, this is a relatively small problem compared to the airport and everything. We're not here at this moment in time to solve the world's problems. We're here to deal with a relatively discreet problem, which is the noise and environmental pollution caused by leaf blowers. And what we are seeking to do is come up with the best solution that we can fashion. It may be imperfect, but it's probably going to be better than what we have now, which is nothing. That's all I'm gonna say for now.
Okay. Thank you, trustee Heiser.
Yes, I'd like to say, yeah, I'd say it was very informative. This, all this, this conversation was surely educational to me. I do feel we do need more work on the legislation if it goes forward, and we have work to do. So thank you all for coming out and voicing your opinions and concerns. Very good.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes. So I also agree with that. And something that really hit home with me was a lot of these exceptions that I don't blame a lot of people for getting upset with. And I do think that part of what we need to work on is leading by example, and I feel like that's something that our board really needs to talk about because just listening to what people have said about the parks and Rye Town Park and how it looks amazing and they use all-electric, I mean, these are things that we probably should talk about for our future. And I know there's a lot of, you know, budget issues, but I think we also need to work on the exclusions and maybe not jump into this ban this year. Maybe phase it in and talk about the dates and realize maybe we can't just rush into this. And the other thing I'd like to say, we do have a lot of landscapers here from our community. And I love that you guys came out, and I know you've talked to our committees, but maybe, I'd like more feedback, I guess, from you guys because it seems like you guys have a lot to say and we don't just want to push that aside and not take that into consideration. So that's how I feel about that.
All right. So I guess before I voice my opinions, Chris, procedurally.
Well, the board has to give direction at the right time. Either can continue to talk about it, you could have other work session, you could have more discussion, but ultimately, if the board wants to proceed with this local law with modifications, then we, staff and council needs direction on what changes you would like to see implemented. And then it needs to be in final form for 10 days in the board's hands. So you need to see it for 10 days. We post it online, so the public has an opportunity to see it and would be able to comment on a revised local law prior to any adoption. So the question is, does the board, the board has to decide either you're ready to make changes now or at a future meeting, or if you want more information or more discussion on any of the topics, because ultimately, that will lead to whatever changes you want put in the local law.
All right. Then I'm thinking probably, you know, most likely, based on that, we're probably looking at two meetings from now at a minimum. So I think getting some direction from the board right now, I think we already have the recommendation from the Sustainability Committee regarding electric use year-round. And...
The sense of the board, do you want to get a sense of the board on this?
The Sustainability Committee may come back with another plan of attack, right?
Yeah. When does the, well, the Sustainability Committee, what's, I don't even, what's, today's 28th? Oh, right. Sustainability Committee is meeting on Thursday?
Second Thursday.
Second Thursday. Okay. So maybe we could ask for a revised report and recommendation from the Sustainability Committee, given that there are already changes?
And those are public meetings, is how you should say it.
Can Sustainability Committee's report be available to the community in advance of any meeting? Because I found their presentation to be very helpful and informative. Because I found their presentation to be very helpful and informative, and it certainly would help tie into a lot of people's thinking and thoughts. I'm sorry if people can't hear you.
Right. And I'll just repeat the question. And also for everyone at home, the question was whether the report and recommendation from the Sustainability Committee could be made publicly available.
Of course.
And I think we absolutely can do that and link it to any agenda items and...
And we, yeah, we could also set up a page on our website that, and if everyone doesn't sign up for our email blast, rybrook.org backslash alerts, and then you can get copies of any communication we send out via email as well. Or you can sign up for our agendas as well online to get them emailed to you. But, yeah, we can create a page on our website and leave updates and put the comments and everything else onto it.
Right. And meanwhile, we will continue the conversation among the board so that the next time we come back, we have something that I think we're ready to vote on, one way or the other. Yes. Can you please approach?
Joanna DiMaggio, 27, Talcott Road. I'd like to know, the Sustainability Committee, what was the type of analysis that was done? Because I know that there were a lot of boxes checked for the towns, but in terms of the data and what they looked at, because a lot of the towns that I looked up while I was sitting here have time ordinances, but there is no typical ban. So in addition to just what the report is, can we see the underlying data and what was compared from all the different towns before we take a vote on what we're going to do?
So we have that available. The board has gotten that. So we can, Chris, can you...
Absolutely. Yeah, no, we have, we've done a survey of all, there was a survey done of all the communities. It's about a year ago, a year ago? Over the last summer? Yeah, it was done last summer. And just a few changes, like Rye made changes. We've put Rye's changes up on our website as well, but I believe it's already in the backup we have before.
So would you say that most of the towns have banned the...
Sustainability put up the map before you where you could see the towns that have...
Completely banned or just the time changes?
So for example, I can give you some examples. I have it open in front of me. Town of Osseting has a ban on gas-powered leaf blowers, May 31st to September 30th. Village of Pelham has a ban on gas-powered leaf blowers that started in 2022. April and, or, it's allowed in April and October 15th through December 15th, but banned at all other times. Village of Larch, oh, wait, sorry, that was Larch, did I say Larch? That was Larchmont. I apologize. Village of Pelham is, it looks like, May, March 15th to April 30th, they can, and October 15th through December 15th, they can, but other, at other times of years banned. So all this information is compiled in a spreadsheet and was in the backup material.
Yeah.
And we'll make sure that it's findable.
So if you go to our agenda for tonight, you'll see all that backup material, the surveys, everything else.
And with the time issue.
And as the mayor said, so just more locally, Town of Marneck, Village of Marneck, City of Rye all have bans with different restrictions. Town of Greenwich and Harrison do not, although Greenwich is looking at it like we are.
Yes. Yes, please. Because otherwise we can't hear you on the playback and...
Hi, I'm Alex Prince, 35 Talcott Road. Listening to the meeting, I heard about the curve, the carve-outs that were done. What was the thinking behind carving out the schools, carving out the parks? Why were, why were they carved out?
A lot of that was done based on other legislation from surrounding communities. So it's commonly seen in some of these. And so it was taking a balanced approach the way that other communities have.
Okay. Thank you.
But the villages as a, because it also doesn't, we don't need the legislation to require it to, like, board can give specific policy and we could also take that direction. So if the board says, you know, no more gas, then we just don't do it anymore. So that's why, you know, we know that the, we also want to go towards electric. So that's why we're in our parks, we're looking to do it in our parks now.
Pretending to the village alone, yes.
Does that cover the schools and the...
Just the village.
Yeah, the schools are a little bit different because whether or not they come under our, or even comes under our ordinance is a different question because that's a different governmental entity. It could be done for other, the other commercial properties that are listed. Any commercial property we could include, but the other, like the Town of Rye is a different level of government, so we can't, we can't restrict that. The schools is another question we just have to research.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Congress? So it sounds like we have a direction forward. We'll await further recommendation from the Sustainability Committee. We will certainly discuss this more as a board. I was going to ask if we was supposed to ask the board. So the public hearing is going to remain open. Look for this on an agenda to come either in two meetings from now, which would be...
You need to do it to a date certain, otherwise we have to re-public notice.
We do. So let's, let's go to, let's go to March 28th. So I would like a motion and a second to adjourn the public hearing until the meeting on March 28th.
Second.
Trustee Fisher?
Do you think one more? Hold on one second. The mayors are telling me that has not enough time. I think I can work quickly. Fine, what is that, April 10th? April?
April...
April 11th? That's true. Well, they're meeting on...
April 11th would be the first meeting in April.
All right. Fine. May I have an amended motion and second?
Still moved.
To postpone, or to, to...
Adjourn.
Adjourn the public hearing until April 11th.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Regurgitatingly, yes. And everyone is welcome to stay for the rest of our agenda. I'm sure it's going to be thrilling and riveting.
Mayor? Mayor, I just want to point out, April 11th is going to be the budget public hearing.
Oh, God.
Just thought about that. You may want to modify that date.
April 11th is the budget public hearing.
Huh?
Yeah, we can do, it's just a presentation.
It's fine with me.
It just means it's going to be a very long meeting.
Now I understand why you never took this on.
All right. And I'm going to ask for a five-minute recess. And then we can, we, so 9:53, we will resume.
It all makes sense.
It all makes sense. All right.
Moving into the resolutions, resolution number three, considering approving the use of Village Streets for the annual Jarden Westchester Triathlon.
Now therefore be resolved that the Jarden Westchester Triathlon is authorized to use the Village of Rybrook Streets for the triathlon on Sunday, September 24th, 2023, requested in a letter dated, received on February 13th, 2013, 2023, and be further resolved the Village route and any conditions shall be approved by the police chief of the Village of Rybrook Police Department.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
Still moved.
Second.
This is something that happens annually. I think we are all good with this.
As long as we don't have to participate.
And it is something that they've been very good about working with our police on routes and everything and making sure that anything that needs to be closed or monitored is so.
Yep.
Happy to help again. Oh, no. Okay. Any comments or questions from the board?
Sounds good.
Chris, do you mind taking a moment? Thank you.
Sure. Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thank you. Resolution number four, considering support of a bill that would amend the general municipal law, the civil service law, the retirement and social security law, and the public health law in relation to emergency medical services.
Whereas proposed state legislation entitled "An Act to Amend General Municipal Law, Civil Service Law, Retirement and Social Security Law, and Public Health Law in Relation to Emergency Medical Services" has been reintroduced by Senators, by New York State Senator Shelley Meyer, that would require, and also New York State Assemblyman Steve Otis, that would require the emergency medical service be provided by all municipalities, define EMS as an essential service, expand the benefits available to EMS service personnel, and set standards for emergency medical services. And whereas this legislation amends the general municipal law to require that EMS services are provided in some form by all municipalities throughout the state, and whereas the legislation amends the general municipal law to allow for fees to be charged by governmental providers for EMS providers creating parity with not-for-profit EMS providers, and whereas the legislation amends the public health law to clarify that EMS services are considered essential services, and whereas the Board of Trustees recognizes the many concerns related to the service delivery of EMS services throughout the county, state, and nation that involves such issues as staff recruitment and retention, the lack of access to alternative revenues such as grants and adequate insurance payments, training opportunities, and clear standards for EMS agencies, and whereas the emergency medical service agencies provide an essential service that should be, provide, that should provide equal access to those in need of their service, and also provide essential intervention, early intervention healthcare to their patients. And whereas the Board of Trustees considers this legislation a good first step in resolving the crisis currently facing EMS in, throughout the communities. And now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees is in support of the passage of the proposed legislation. Be it further resolved, the administrator shall distribute copies of this resolution of support to New York State Senator Shelley Meyer, New York State Assemblyman Steve Otis, and New York State Governor Kathy Hochul.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
Still moved.
Second.
First of all, I would, for those that aren't aware, this is something that Village Administrator Chris Bradbury has been working very heavily on and has been very heavily involved in. And we really appreciate all of your efforts, Chris. We appreciate Senator, State Senator Mayor and Assemblyman Otis for their efforts in this. And there is some good news on this front.
Yes.
Chris, I'll allow you to, you to tell.
Yeah. So the legislation that the board is asked to support is, was reintroduced legislation that was entered in last year and got stuck in committee last year. So, but we've been trying to provide, there's a lot of people that have really been focusing this, their efforts on this. There's a county, County Commissioner of Department of Emergency Services, Richard Wishney, Michael Volk from the county, local, but Steve Otis, Shelley Meyer, NICOM, Association of Counties, Association of Towns, are all trying to, you know, provide information to the local communities to say EMS is really in a state of crisis and needs help. As the mayor said, there's been some real progress this year, particularly both from the executive budget of the governor, which we hope those items are included, as well as a change from the Comptroller's Office providing access for the Empire Plan or NICEP. It's a health plan. So let's talk about that one first. So the good news is through the offices, the education of the communities and the offices of Shelley Meyer and Steve Otis, they had a lot of meetings with the Comptroller's Office and they agreed to make a change effective already, immediately, that allows access to the NICEP plan for the, by the local not-for-profit EMS agencies, which is a major change because it provides better insurance and often for less cost. One of the issues is that these groups are very small groups, so their, their quotes, it either results in high rates or lower benefits at a, at different, at lower cost. So this is a problem. It's something that we appreciate the efforts of the Comptroller's Office in recognizing about this disparity and creating that access for the local not-for-profits like our own EMS. The state, the governor also has entered in, in the budget, in the executive budget to do some other things. They've, she's put in her executive budget to establish state and regional EMS councils, to establish, let me see here, so the, let me just get this one thing here. So some of the things in the executive budget, I want to be specific, is that establishes performance standards for EMS, so that there's standards that have to be followed by all the agencies. There also constitutes a comprehensive emergency service system plan that's both regionally and statewide. That's also in our legislation. It increases the Medicaid reimbursement rate for EMS transportation to certain locations, and also undertakes a public service campaign for recruitment and retention. So those are all pieces of the, of, it's included in our legislation. Shelley Meyer and Steve Otis are also committed to saying if these additional items that are major issues for us, like such as, to me seems like a no-brainer, which is deeming this service as an essential service, really is a central part to that. And they're trying to modify the executive budget to include that, but if not, then they want to continue with the legislation and push that part of it, as well as some of the other pieces in the legislation. But in short, you know, we're happy with some of the steps that have been taken, but there's more to do. The EMS is a really valuable service. You know, we all saw, you know, these are people that are going out and helping our, firefighters are in the room, you know, when they're going into the, into the homes, they're the ones caring for the people in the homes that need care, or caring for our firefighters when they come out if they need help. You know, they're going to traffic accidents. And I think it was, you know, you could look at what was demonstrated during COVID, just look no further than COVID. They are, they're going often with substandard or no health insurance. They're going into homes and coming and treating and going and taking early, you know, health, providing healthcare services even at a time where there was no vaccines available, and coming out and then going home to their families. You know, that's pretty extraordinary, you know, efforts that were made by all of them. And, you know, they, they really are deserving of being deemed as an essential service, like so many other states like Connecticut and Pennsylvania. So, you know, I, we're very pleased with the efforts that have been made. There's more to do, and we're here to continue that education.
Thank you, Chris. And I think it's one thing that a lot of people really don't understand is that EMS is not considered an essential service and is not required to be provided by municipalities, which is just baffling to think about. And we're very lucky to have a very robust EMS service here in Rye, Portchester, and Rybrook.
Yeah, we really do. And they, you know, and their response times are excellent, really. But what's happening is they're being pulled to other communities to provide more mutual aid. There was over 7,000 calls for mutual aid in this county alone last year. That's, that's incredible when you think about it. So that means there's, when they, somebody called 911 for help, the home agency was not able to provide the service and had to call for help from another community.
7,000 times.
7,000 times in the year. That's incredible. And it's no different, and that's why it's state legislation, because upstate, it's different issues, but similar issues. They're also having recruitment and retention problems. Since it's not considered essential, municipalities are not required to provide EMS services in New York State. So what happens is if a home agency closes, you know, the nearest agencies are going to come and provide the service. So what that means is their area, their coverage areas are expanded and hospitals are closing, as we all know over the years. So not only are areas getting larger with more response times, but now the hospitals are sometimes even farther. So that early intervention healthcare, being part of that healthcare system and looked at it that way, is really such a key part of how we have to think about EMS.
And also for those who don't know, at the last Westchester Municipal Officials Association meeting, Chris presented to, was the keynote speaker presenting to the WMOA about that. So...
Thank you for coming and supporting.
My pleasure. So that being said, any other comments, questions?
I had the pleasure of attending the press conference, I think it was on the 17th.
Yep.
And both Senator Mayor and Assemblyperson Otis praised Chris to the hilt for this. Chris was singled out as being one of the most responsible people for this legislation. And my takeaway at that press conference was that EMS was finally going to get the respect it deserved. Long overdue, but they were never given that respect, and now hopefully they will get it.
We can hope.
Yep.
Any other comments, questions on our letter of support?
Very good, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you. Again, that's why we got into this. That's why elected officials, appointed officials, that's why we got into this. If you see a problem, you want to try to effectuate change, right? That's what it's about.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino? Yes, Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thank you. Resolution number five, considering approval of the minutes for the meeting held on November 25th, 2022. Oh, it didn't say that in the, okay, I see.
It is the 8th and 22nd, is that correct?
Yeah, it's the 8th and 22nd. It just didn't, it didn't say.
Didn't match up. Okay.
Matched up.
Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees approves the minutes for the meetings held on November 8th and November 22nd.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second?
8th and the...
And 22nd.
It says 25th. Wait, it says November.
Yeah, November 8th and November 22nd, 2022, is what it says on the resolution that I have opened in front of me. that I have opened in front of me. Although it does say November 25th on the...
If you look at the backup, it'll tell us.
Do I have to look at a calendar now?
No, we're going to look at the backup.
All right, oh, yeah, look at those minutes.
November 8th.
It would be the 22nd, if it's two weeks later.
And both of them say November 8th, so the board should only do November 8th.
Do they both say?
Yeah, they both only say November 8th.
So November 8th.
Okay, we are, okay, so let me change that. I'm just going to, now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees approves the minutes for the meeting held on November 8th, 2022. Please have a motion and a second on that.
Motion.
Wow, that took way too long. All right.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. I love it, thank you. We should have some laughter tonight.
Exactly.
Okay, administrators' report, please.
Okay, these have a few items I want to mention. Just want to give an update on the National Resource Conservation Service Flood Plane Protection Program. I think I got that right. It's a long, long name. But we have developed a draft restoration plan through the, through the NRCS, which is the abbreviation for that agency. We do have 12 applications that were submitted as being interested in this process, in this process of creating a new floodplain and removing the homes, and basically removing the hazards in the Brook Lane area. So that preliminary restoration plan now goes from the state office to the federal office, and that, along with a memo of, of understanding. And then basically the next steps are to create a, if it's approved by the federal office, which we expect it would be, the next step would be to request what they call due diligence funding, which is the preliminary funding. And then there'll be a cooperative agreement that's sent to the village that has to be enacted and approved by the village board. So that's the next thing to expect, coming back again after it's approved by the federal office. And once that's done, that's when we get into the appraisal phase. Okay. Westchester County elections, again, are going to be, looking to be held at the Rybrook Firehouse, so the, as one of the locations. So early voting would occur on, from June 17th to the 25th, and October 28th to November 5th. And that's for the elections that would be held on June 27th and November 7th. The elections were just one of the many districts, but for early voting, you know, were central for this region. Westchester Power, we got a note from Westchester Power, just giving an update, which we're going to put on our website and put out to the community. And as part of that, they just wanted to highlight again that, you know, providing transparency, transparency to the public, the, in November, you know, the rates that were approved for Westchester Power, which were fixed rates, is basically the renewables 15.128 cents per kilowatt. So remember, that was the renewable rate. The standard rate was a little bit different. The ConEd rates now were, are about just under 13 cents in January, and about 11.5 cents in February, but that's not renewable energy, that's standard. So what they wanted to remind and ask to, you know, residents and everyone to consider, just remember that the fixed rate does provide stability, but it does provide, you know, an option for people who want that. The renewable, it's also renewable, which is more environmentally friendly. But the key thing here is the flexibility. Residents can always go to the website for Westchester Power. You can opt in, you can opt out without penalty, so it's a very flexible program. You know, if you want to, you know, they, they would like to see people stay and continue in the program, but they also want people to have the facts. So the facts are, it is a little bit higher, but what you're paying, what you're getting with that is a stable rate that's fixed, and you're getting, you're supporting renewable energy. And if you want, or you change your mind any later date, you can always change your mind. And lastly, I just want to mention, there was a, we submitted also for another grant, for a records management grant in the amount of $67,000 with no local match. And that's through the local government Records Management Improvement Fund. So that's through the state. So we're hoping to, hopefully be successful, but there was another grant submitted. I just want to alert the board, because I had to sign the paperwork this week.
Great.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Chris. I'd also just like to say a big thank you to the staff that was out plowing last night.
Great job.
And really did a great job. The streets were clear this morning, everyone was able to get where they needed. For me, that was taking my kids to go sledding because school was canceled, which I think my kids were, they loved, because it was the first snow day of the year that they had, and they kept hoping for one.
I even got, I even got an email from a, I got an email from someone that said they got home very late and came through all the communities and had to, said Rybrook was the best, the best cleared community, so that was...
I believe it.
That was at midnight.
I believe it.
That could not be a surprise.
I believe it. They, our crew does a great job and had, had the roads open. I didn't hear of any issues throughout, throughout the morning. So thank you to everyone involved there. Any comments from the public?
Come on, nothing?
Seeing, seeing none. The next meetings of the village board are March 14th and March 28th, 2023. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, you guys all know John G. Ardano, who are a firefighter, and Michael Marr.
Yeah.
And Michael's sister is the one who is through the, in the police academy.